All right, I've got five o'clock. I'll call tonight's meeting to order, Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, roll call, we have selectmen, uh, Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlow. Uh, is Katie gonna be here, Jesse?
No, Katie.
Oh, okay. Uh, in-town manager, Jesse Dunbar. Um, adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change on the agenda? All right, first thing is we have a public hearing entitled, uh, Law Enforcement Contract. Um, basically to summarize it, um, law enforcement has been kind of a hot topic over the last year. Um, we wanted to kind of get input from residents on what they'd like to see for law enforcement in the future. Um, I wanna make sure everybody knows there'll be no decisions will be made tonight. This is just to get input from residents. Um, we know there'll be strong feelings both ways. Please be respectful of each other, even if you don't agree with them. Um, this is not a debate, and we just wanna hear what residents have for ideas. So, I will open up the public hearing at five oh one. Owen, please state your name before you speak, if there's, seems like this isn't a very big crowd now, but.
I'm kinda saving, and I think it's about time we get rid of them. They don't show up to calls. How many vehicles, how many houses gonna get broken into? Nothing gets done. All the evidence handed on silver platter to them, they didn't meant to do anything. Still, nothing gets done. It keeps happening, workout. The break ends up there now by the year, not by how many times. We're on year three of this, and it's getting a little bit old.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Uh, yeah, Scotty.
Name's Scott Harper. How many times we gonna go through this? It's like every three years now. We, everybody wants to change 'cause one person has a complaint. I mean, we went through it three years ago, and we've gone through it every year. You only give the Sheriff's Department a year contract before. I mean, last time was gonna cost us like a hundred thousand dollars more because of that. Because I didn't even figure in dispatch. We get dispatch if nothing. I mean, just because someone comes in and complains, I mean, everything's a complaint. I had nothing which stole out of my way out of that. I called the, the Sheriff's Department, they wasn't on duty. I had to call State Police. Two days later, showed up. And that's not State Police. So, I mean, I think Sheriff's Department does a good job. I mean, I, I don't have a problem. I've called them before, and I get answers, but maybe some people, they just don't wanna talk to them.
Yeah, Tim, but what I've called them a bunch of times in the past, about this year, and they've always been very responsive. When they want duty, because they're off duty, you can't expect so much, but look, they've done an excellent job. So, I'll get something.
Yep.
So, it's Teller. But I had a complaint opposed to how good, been very respectful to me, and always looked into it, and always seemed to get back to me one way or the other. And, uh, I'm happy with what they've done. They've done fine. As far as I can tell, it's done really well.
Thanks. Sorry, yeah?
Here is C D. Um, I will say that we have not had good response up to the backside. As many times as people have called, they don't seem to wanna do anything when they have an eighty thousand dollar truck stolen, and they know exactly who took it, 'cause there's plenty of proof. Um, every house up our way has been broken into multiple times. We have been told multiple times not to call them, or will have charges on us for harassment, because they don't wanna hear anything about it. They can even be in town and still do nothing. And I don't think that us paying all this money for them not to arrest somebody when they have proof, or do come to people when they have something, or come to us and say, well, if, if you catch them, then do what you have to. And then, if somebody does something, they're the ones in trouble? No, I'm sorry. And, and there's not many people here tonight, 'cause a lot of people that are gonna be here are either sick with COVID, or some, some of them's in the hospital right now. So, I don't think that this one person or two people having a complaint is even close to it. There is ninety percent of this town that do not want them, and everybody knows it.
Okay, yes.
Uh, Larry Althea, Steel Cove. I really have a complaint, but I think it's, that it's time that we get more of enforcement instead of a presence. Back when they, in, in, when, uh, the town hired the county to be, um, I don't remember what it was. And, and I think it, they really just wanted a presence. They just wanted, the, the select board at the time didn't wanna pay extra to do the enforcement, which is taking people to court and doing all that work, desk work, whatever you wanna call it, investigating. They just wanted somebody down here eight hours a day to make a presence and deter some, you know, speeding and, and, and other things. And I think it's time that that, that we don't do that anymore. It's, with more people coming over here, more vacationers, and, uh, more people living here year-round, it's time we have more of enforcement and, uh, for, for them to have a better response to it.
Okay. Anything from anybody else? Yes, Tim.
Yes, what's the schedule hours per week?
Um, we're budgeted forty-five is what we have a, a maximum of. I think Jesse could tell you what roughly the high thirties, I think they've been running, ru- roughly.
Mid, yeah, mid.
Mid to high, yeah.
That's a lot more than what I was having last night.
Yeah.
And we had a fantastic relationship with that one.
Yep. All right. Last call for comments. Okay, seeing no comments, uh, no more comments. I will close the public hearing at five oh seven. All right, next we have approval of minutes. We have the minutes from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
I can make a motion to approve the minutes of October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Approval of warrants. We have warrant thirty-seven for one thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Warrant thirty-eight for four hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Thirty-nine for two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, forty for eleven thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Forty-one for sixteen dollars. Forty-two for thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and four cents. Forty-three for thirty dollars and eighty cents. Forty-four for seven hundred and eight dollars. Uh, forty-five for eight thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. Forty-six for eleven thousand twenty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. Forty-seven, seven thousand thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Forty-eight for one hundred twelve dollars and seventy-one cents. I mean, Jesse, how many you gonna put on here? Forty-nine, eleven thousand five hundred thirty dollars and twenty-five cents. And warrant fifty for one hundred seventy-four thousand five dollars and forty-one cents.
I make a motion to approve warrants thirty-seven through fifty.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants thirty-seven through fifty. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, financial reports. Uh, is you, Jesse?
These reports are as of October thirty-first, um, which is thirty-four percent of the later fiscal year. Under revenues in October, we collected one hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars in property taxes. Total collections for the year are at ninety-two point three four percent of budget, uh, remaining ahead of pace for FY twenty-two and full pacing all recent years. We also collected forty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars in motor vehicle excise tax, resulting in total collections of thirty-nine point eight four percent of what was budgeted. And again, this is ahead of pace from last year and all of the recent years. In the Worf Fund, we received twenty-six hundred and ninety in use permits and a thousand dollars in Worf garage rent. In the Harbor Fund, we received eight hundred and thirty-six dollars in transient program. Under expenses, couple of notable expenses in the administration class center, um, is currently running at thirty-four point eight one percent of the budgeted amount for FY twenty-three. In October, some expenses included five hundred dollars in postage, thirty-three hundred and ninety-eight dollars for audit services, and sixty-two hundred and thirteen in attorney's fees. Public Works is currently running at twenty-one point six eight percent of the budget. Uh, notable expenses in October include fifty-four hundred and ninety-seven dollars for road salt, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for repair parts, twenty-six hundred and seventy-eight in summer gas and diesel, and fifteen seventy-five in a repair to the fish liner. In the Worf, you'll see, uh, the expense of twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty-four for the Worf reconstruction debt service. And in the Harbor and Steel Cove Fund, all expenses were routine in line. In the general ledger, we received seventeen thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars in revenue sharing from the state in October, bringing our total to fifty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty-four, which is forty-four percent of what was budgeted for the year. Otherwise, there are no changes to the general reserve accounts this, um, October.
Thank you, Jesse.
I make a motion to accept the July twenty twenty-two through October twenty twenty-two financial reports.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the July twenty twenty-two through October twenty twenty-two financial reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have regular business. First thing under regular business is the public safety building. You know, this has been a conversation that we've had for quite a while. Um, we've talked to the fire department in the past about, obviously, their, uh, building is aged and kind of running out of space a little bit, and, um, I know there's been some concern with the, the ambulance not, no longer being housed down there. So, um, I think this is our chance to put it out and, and, uh, maybe get something started and start budgeting for it over a long period of time and, um, kind of get just some preliminary plans going.
There, um, I'll add that, um, the, the fire chief emailed back that he's away hunting this week, so he couldn't make it tonight. I told him it was just the start of the conversation, so.
Yep.
Plenty more times to input. Um, he did want me to pass along that he was kind of targeting twenty thirty as the year to have the new building for the fire department. And, um, we've been budgeting fifty thousand a year for a couple of years at the request of the fire department. Um, there was a decision made by, um, the select board prior to my arrival here to put that in a public safety reserve, a public safety building reserve. Um, the balance is approximately one hundred and seventy-one thousand, I guess, what. The current station, um, on Harbor Drive for the fire department, um, is in need of repairs, is my understanding, that they're outgrowing it as far as size of trucks and future trucks. Um, everything's currently inside it right now. And the, just as a reminder, the fire department currently operates on its own, separate from the town. And the fire department owns its buildings. The town does not own that real estate that it's kept.
So, that would be different if we did a new public safety building, fire station? That would be, the town would own it?
That's the thought, is that the, is the town is building a new building, it would then be a municipal building. The town does currently insure the two fire stations on our property casualty insurance.
Even though they're not running, they're, that's, I don't know.
Yeah, it's a lot of gray area this year.
That's weird, yeah, yes. And I think we need to figure out uh, our role with the fire department. Like, wh- who owns what or what? Yeah, like, it's gray, and I think we need to make it not gray anymore.
It's been confusing forever.
It has, it has, yeah. Anyway, they definitely have outgrown that station, and we do need to have that ambulance over here. And did the ambulance get chewed away 'cause of space?
Yes, initially, um, yes, they needed that for the new engine that finally arrived. The ambulance service was, um, asked to leave that space for the new engine, you know.
And I know consolidation is in the future, but also if we, if there is consolidation from what, I'm not really up to speed on all of it and the newest stuff, but, um, you know, they're, they're gonna need a, a base here anyway, you know, like, we're gonna need, you're still gonna have a fire department right here, whether it's consolidated or it's not, but this could also be a long time down the road, because I know it's been talked about for, seems like twenty years now, so, um, I know, I would just like to, you know, it's not the thing on the airplane, Jesse, but I'd like to see if Jesse could, I know he's drawn up sketches before, just something rough. Um, maybe get with the, the fire chief or someone at the fire department, find out how many bays that they need, um, for what they would require. Obviously, one for the ambulance, 'cause I think that's a big concern of a lot of residents. They wanna see that ambulance back here. And then, um, maybe even like a, you know, the last bay of the, of the building is like an office space, if you ever need, you know, for, like, law enforcement, if they're ever down here, if they need the space, or higher talent, what the future brings, but at least you, you have, um, you know, you've got, uh, an office space there as well. They could use it for their meetings or, or whatever have you.
I think if you're looking that far ahead, though, you're gonna have to also come up with, like, sleeping quarters or something like that, 'cause eventually, we're going to have to have somebody, whether it's nine to five, I mean, their, their volunteers are dwindling really fast. And eventually, I think they're going to have to have somebody that's there from nine to five, and then the volunteers are the night guys, you know what I mean? Most of their volunteers right now work other jobs, and on, in town during the day, they're spread out wherever they, they work during the day, so.
What would you build?
Um, I.
Can you stand there, can you?
No, that's not the town's property, as Jesse just said, that's the fire department's property. Um, I think one of the locations that we've thought of would be, um, like where this ice skating rink is right down here, where it's on town property, we already own it. Um, it's a pretty nice level spot. It's close to the town office, so everything's kind of together. Um, I think, you know, any building site has its challenges, but I think there's not a lot that can go there because of the old dump being out back, and it's, you know, I, I'm sure, it's probably as good as any spot, you know, that we could, or as, as good a use as you could ever get for the location, I should say.
And we already own the property, which is half the battle.
Yeah. Yeah.
Could they get plenty of non-drinkable water to fill their tanks with?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, I don't think we need.
You could drill a well there.
Yeah, yeah.
There is a well.
There is a well, it's, yeah, yeah.
So, does this keep the, the ambulance service still a, a two-town service, right? If we bring the ambulance and have a bay for them here, and that keeps the fire department as still their own private entity, or like, we move in and amend the town employees, or like, how?
That's, I mean, to be determined, I think, moving forward, but.
That's future conversation probably for. I think.
The, the ambulance service currently has, the main unit is at the, um, next to the police station at the town office in South Ost, and then the second one that was over here is housed in their fire station.
And they're hoping for a new one, right? They're raising money for a new ambulance, so there would be three, or does one?
I believe they'd be giving.
One goes away and the new one.
Yeah, I think it was one of the, one of the times that I've got called the most, um, since I've been on the select board, when the ambulance was no longer in town. Um, and I was really surprised at how much concern there was with people, even though it's kind of a backup ambulance, but there was a lot of concern. A lot of people wanted to see that ambulance just down there, just, just in case. And, uh, I think that's something that's important to people, and they wanna see it there, so, um, I think as long as we leave, you don't want it to be too big, too elaborate, but if we can just allow enough room to make sure, um, we can house them and everything they need. I don't know exactly what they need in their bay, but, um, enough, enough room for them.
It's the Southwest Harbor Tremont Nursing Service that runs the ambulance.
Yes, yep.
You know, Tremont's involved, and whether how long that's gonna be, it's been that way for a long time.
Yeah.
You never know about the future.
Yeah, exactly. And, I mean, how, I believe how it's set up now is you just lease the, lease the bay to them, and, you know, if, I'm sure, times will change, someone else might own it or whatever, but that's.
Well, they, they, they give them that, you know, it's their nonprofit, so they could just give it to somebody else, and they might not wanna it.
Yeah.
So, they could change the name, and.
Yeah.
You never know.
Yep. Um, yeah, does anybody have any other ideas as far as location that you think would be better? Or do you wanna, I know this is all rough, super preliminary, but, um, kind of get Jesse to do up a sketch and how it would all fit in there and, and, um.
There's no way we can do it here?
The, it's.
Too close to, yeah, okay.
Yeah, looks like it would be.
I mean, when we, when we did a rough draft back a year or so ago, it was a hundred and forty feet, a hundred and forty-four feet long, um, to accommodate, I believe it was the number of trucks they have and an ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
So, if it's that size, you know, it wouldn't get over here, um, if there's a reason to reconsolidate.
So, Jesse, with another seven years, we're gonna, if we continue to put fifty thousand in per year, you know, we're gonna be just over half a million.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that, that's probably not enough to build what we want.
I, I would anticipate that you would go out to get a bond to build the fire station, um, and you would probably use what's in that reserve for any design purposes, any smaller costs along the way, but the actual, when you go up and get a bid, I would assume that that bid amount is gonna be bonded as a debt service to it, I'd anticipate, um.
Now, what about, also, I know times change, grants change all the time, and I know that's not your job, Jesse, to chase grants, but, um, is there someone that we could ask or hire to look into grants for that? 'Cause I know Chris had had one for a while, if we, um, there was some sort of a safety, um, for the waterfront, so if we had a bay that the harbor master could keep his boat in and heated, you remember that, Kevin?
Yeah.
Then there was a substantial grant that we could get, um, just as a port security, I mean, I'm sure this grant, like, all the time.
I'll, I'll be checking the grant, um, website. Um, but I also will bring it up, um, I have a meeting tomorrow with FEMA for the direct technical assistance grant that we received, so they wanna know what potential infrastructure projects we may need technical assistance on, so I can bring it up and see if there's any suggestions they have as far as, um, where it would be related to emergency response we may have. Suggestions of, thoughts on it.
Uh, one more point, um, what about the Steel Cove substation? How would that blend into the long-term plans?
I believe when we have talked about this before, that would not move, there would be no change there whatsoever. I think this would be your main hub, so to speak, down here, and that would still be, 'cause I think Keith would know, but you have to have one so many, every so many miles, so.
Right, and I think the boat is tented with air smith now.
The what is?
The boat.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the fire boat, yes.
Yeah.
Is that town, is that owned by a town, or no? It's a fire department, right?
I'm quite sure that the fire department owns both of the buildings. We own all of the trucks and the stuff.
So, wouldn't that be kind of weird, though? Can we still have them own that property, and if we have to reform, we have to own all of the properties? That's my question.
Depends what your, if the structure changes at all, or?
We might have to buy it from the fire department sometime, you know, that might be an option, too. Sure, there's a lot, a lot to iron, that's all, but just a, a location and a size and a rough budget of where, you know, a goal as to what we wanna raise, I think, is, is all we need for right now. It's gonna be a while.
So, we have a pretty good idea, the ice skating lot, but if Keith comes back and it's like crazy big, we might have to look at a different spot, right?
I think, yeah, if you do the math, I think what Jesse had for, um, a dimension is there's more than enough room for that there. And that, that also would be to the clearing, where it's already cleared. If you cleared more trees back towards the town office, even twenty feet, um, it's gonna give you more room in front of the truck, you know, like, to pull the trucks out and stuff, so, I don't know, I feel like there was, there was plenty of space, so.
Plenty of space, plenty, okay, good, yeah, good. And I mean, if we.
One way to reduce the size might be to put dorms or any office space or anything up above.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, some kind of a conference training room or something.
Um, do you know what, um, Ta- not Town Hill, uh, Somerville is doing now, Jesse? Are they, is that, are those volunteers, do they pay to have that manned? I've just noticed it's been manned over the last six months or so.
Yeah, no, they, uh, don't quote me, but they have, like, eight full time now, or could be more, um.
They take time.
Mount, Mount Desert?
Mount Desert, yeah, um, so, yes, it's, they completed the renovations there, so that's why you've seen the vehicles there, it's manned, I think, twenty-four.
Yeah.
Oh, I stopped in there and talked to some of them. They were, uh, doing renovations on the firehouse and, etc., that's why.
Yeah, so they moved everything to some.
Yeah, everything was real over there.
As far as that's, that's.
They're on full time, twenty-four?
I believe, something like that, yeah.
Okay, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's probably the future for here, eventually, so I think it is a smart idea to, to add on whatever your bay size is, just one bay for, um, you know, downstairs office, or, you know, bathrooms, whatever, and then maybe upstairs just a spot where they could have a bumper room or, or whatnot.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So, is that a big enough budget for us there, that we're, what we're gonna put in, or any ideas there?
I mean, we haven't gotten the request for next year, but it's up to you guys as far as the reserve goes, but I'm guessing we can probably just do the same fifty again, s- um, towards it, but again, I think most likely it's gonna be several million dollars, so.
What, several? Come on.
No, no, don't think that way, Jesse.
Come on. Several?
Just a million.
Fair, that's not several.
Judging by the cost of nearby garages.
Judging by the cost of nearby garages.
Man.
Judging by a hundred and forty thousand dollar two walls, I think.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
What if we started, um, I mean, I know it's a lot, but what if we started doing seventy-five or a hundred for a year, if we can afford to do so, just to kind of give us a little bit more, more in the reserve, and, I mean, hopefully, we get some grant that you find that will pay for half of it, and there we go. It doesn't seem to work that way sometimes. Sometimes it does, though, we've had, good luck in the past.
Maybe we'll finalize our sketch and maybe get a rougher number on how much the building's actually gonna be, and then decide.
Yeah.
That's, okay. So, Jesse, to add to your task, please give us a sketch of a building footprint and how it would sit on that lot. And that'll regroup then.
Jamie, I have one more question. Can you tell me how the, uh, the fund for the public safety building is set up, so what can you use it for? And have you used it since it's been set up?
No, I know we haven't used it, but Jesse would be able to explain about how it was.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the original wording, but, um.
I think we kept it broad enough so that, cause there was some grants, like I say, for waterfront, um, protection. So that's why it's public safety, um, so it would cover a few, you know, be a little bit more broad, um, is why the title was put that way.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I'd have to look up the original war article to see if there was any addition, see what the, for the purposes of, but yes, it would have been set up as its own or.
Yeah, I remember there was a war.
Yeah. Yep.
So futures likely couldn't decide to use it for something else?
No, no, they can't.
You'd have to ask the voters to change it.
To do, yeah, yeah.
All right, do you need a motion or anything, Jesse? Is that good?
I think that's fine.
Okay. All right, next is the Maine Lobstromans Association donations. Um, discussion of a possible donation to the Lobstromans Association. Um, Jesse mentioned this to me and actually it was on my list of things to mention to Jesse. Um, a lot of the, the towns up and down the coast, uh, fishing communities have been, um, putting a, a donation, um, towards the, the fight for Maine Lobstromans Association, um, in their legal funds, um, with all of their regulations and restrictions that have been coming up. I have, obviously, I keep a, a close eye on that stuff and I don't think, um, the donation is necessarily the, the big thing of it. It's just that the town supports it. I think that's the, you know, stands behind, um, the fishing community.
Yeah, but can they raise, can they raise enough, uh, to buy these three acres?
Uh, they're up to, it was a million and change, um, is what I was told about a week ago. And I know one of the banks just put another three hundred down, so, um, I think it's, I mean, that's a lot of, uh, you know, that's a lot of attorney's fees, so I think that will keep, you know, if they can keep a couple attorneys employed for a couple of years, probably it might make a difference. It's the way I feel about it, and that seems like the only way to, to do anything nowadays.
Yes.
Stinks that it has to be that way, but I think we have to let the fight sometimes, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, uh, so you're making a motion to do a donation tonight?
Uh, yes, that would be what the topic was, was, uh, to do a donation in support of the, um, uh, Maine Lobsterman.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's tapped, there's money that you'd be using?
Yes, it would be, yes.
And so you don't, you don't have to vote on it? You have a?
Uh, Jesse, would that be, that's more of a Jesse question, I guess. If it's under a certain amount, we.
Right, I mean, it'd be coming out, most likely a contingency fund, um, for that. We don't have a legal fund. Some of the towns have done like five thousand dollars from their legal reserve, um, or legal funds. Um, most of the ones that I got feedback from were doing five hundred to a thousand range. Um, other towns, uh, with Stonington, who did a bigger five thousand from their legal and then they're holding a special town meeting, yeah, next month for an additional ten thousand from their legal fund. But, um, that would be, um, I would assume you would take that as a contingency fund, um, or something like that. Or you could choose to use ARPA funds, um.
Yeah, like I said, I don't think it's the dollar amount, in my opinion, I think it's just the, you know, showing that, um, we care about our, our small fishing community.
Either.
What are you thinking? We should donate?
That's, I mean, Jesse knows more about the, um, the list that I saw just shows the towns and there are a lot of towns that have done, you know, a lot, obviously, most of the coastal communities that I saw, um, kind of to the west of us more than, I think, I didn't see many, uh, east of us, did you? Yeah. I know, and it changes every month, you get a.
Uh, yeah, there was, um, um, damn, I'm just gonna, um.
Yep.
Did you say western east?
Yeah, I said east. I don't think that, I didn't see, Winnebago Harbor, maybe, um, in that, but I, I don't know what the dollar amount, how do you?
That's the other direction.
Yes, yes. And most that I got feedback from was five hundred, yeah, yeah.
Um, and do you think we could use ARPA funds? And you feel like, when you just mentioned that, that, would that be a, you, you have confidence that, that I would be falling to use those?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I think that would be even less.
That's a better, a better idea.
Yep, that would be, then it's not taxpayers' money.
If you use ARPA fund?
No, directly, we, yeah, I don't even start with, yeah.
I'll make a motion to donate five hundred dollars to the Maine Lobsterman Association.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to donate five hundred dollars to the Maine Lobstormans Association. And would you say how do you to pull the funds from the ARPA?
ARPA funds.
Yeah, ARPA funds, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
That's what I said.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have the Rich Cemetery Lot. Um, we have a request to purchase a lot.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to sell lot one in Rich Cemetery to Thomas and Florence McAfee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to authorize a town manager to sell lot one in Rich Cemetery to Thomas and Florence McCaffrey, McCaffey?
McCaffey.
Okay. Uh, is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next is electing municipal review committee board of directors. Of your list. And.
I'm making a motion to vote for Tony Smith for MRC Board of Directors.
Second.
Tony's, the public board's director.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to vote for Tony Smith, um, for the MRC Board of Directors. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, we need to have, how many? Thought we needed to have.
Just one.
Just one?
Okay.
Sorry, probably need to say one. All right, next is budget encumbrance. Let you take that one, Jesse.
Uh, yeah, so the road construction project on Dix Point Road, um, was originally part of the FY twenty-two budget. Um, and was not completed, um, due to finishing the prior year's road projects, um, during that fiscal year. So the, um, main balance of those funds, one hundred thirty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars and twenty cents is in the FY twenty-two budget. So we just need to encumber these over to FY twenty-three to, um, pay the invoice when it comes in. Um, they've done most of the, um, completion of the project. Uh, they still need to overlay the whole thing, um, with a layer of pavement, um, and I'm just waiting to hear back if they're gonna squeeze that in for a little bit dirt.
Winter's here.
It's probably good today.
Feels it today, more than ever.
I'm motion to encumber one hundred thirty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars and twenty cents from the fiscal year two twenty-two Summer Roads Dix Point budget line to the fiscal year twenty-three Summer Roads Dix Point budget line.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to encumber one hundred thirty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars and twenty cents from the FY twenty-two Summer Roads, uh, Dix Point budget line to the FY twenty-three Summer Roads Dix Point budget line. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have the select board meeting schedule.
So in your packets is the proposed schedule, um, a couple of points, um, purely usual, February twenty-first is school vacation week. So if any of you anticipate, um, not being able to make that money now, um, we can look at changing that. Um, March thirteenth and twenty-seventh would be special meetings, considering the budget and maybe a town meeting warrant. April tenth and twenty-fourth, I have adjusted from your normal meeting dates of the third, uh, April third to avoid five meetings in a row from March. And I'm scheduled to be away on the seventeenth, um, so I adjusted those two dates in there. The town election and town meeting, um, are scheduled for the usual second week in May, with election date Monday, May eighth, and town meeting being Tuesday, May ninth. July third, um, this past year you only had one meeting in July, um, to give everyone a summer break, so I have scheduled twenty twenty-three the same, um, unless you wish to do otherwise. And November tenth, um, it was changed, um, I guess, but it was changed with the election, things, November being, um, setting up for the election, the near normal Monday for the election Tuesday.
I won't be here, Jesse, for the February vacation. I don't know if there's multiple other people or not, but.
I don't know that far in advance.
Yeah, you're good. I don't know what's happening tomorrow.
No, my wife is good.
Yeah.
Only other thing I could see would be if anyone else feels, if we can stretch, unless, and we have before, if there's some issues, we can have, we can schedule another meeting when it gets closer, special meeting, but if, you know, August, instead of having two meetings, if we could do one, um, that summer break's kinda nice, that July one after we get hit hard in the spring and then November, I don't mind doing two. Then, I, you know, I'd rather have the second one in November and, and just one in August, but that's everybody else's opinion too.
Yeah, when in November's in the middle of the month, I think that'd be fine.
Yeah.
Unless we need to one earlier. I mean, there is almost a month between them.
I know, there's quite a bit on, like, this meeting for one in November, that's the only trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hate spreading out too much.
Yeah, no, I know. Stacked right up.
Why is that?
Get stacks of stuff.
You can add, you can add a third in October.
Jesse.
Cause October's long.
Why not just two in November? What's up with that?
Cause you can't do the sixth, so.
Oh.
You have to do.
And you have Thanksgiving break, yeah, okay.
I mean, unless you have two in a row.
Yeah, when would the third one be? Or no, that would be, the third, yeah. Yeah, that would be okay.
The third is. October third. So it'd be, it'd be, uh, two sixteen third.
Anybody else has two cents on that?
That works for me, that's two weeks in between.
Yeah, it's two weeks in between, that's, that's fine with me.
I, I would tend to wait and see if we need it myself.
Yeah, no, I know, if we don't, that's true. I mean, we could just wait and then if we need it, like I say, in August, if we have a lot going on, we can schedule them, but, um.
Okay, so you wanna take out August night first?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, and what if you put one right in the middle of the month? Is there a reason why?
Nope, you can do that.
Just put one right in the middle between the two weeks?
Do the fourteenth.
Yep.
August, is that what we're, in August?
Yep, just do the fourteenth and then that's it.
Not the twenty-first.
No sevens, no twenty-first.
Or the seventh.
No seven, no twenty-first. Okay, dokey.
You're getting the summer break again.
You guys are getting lazy.
Okay.
Those are pretty slow meetings, usually, yeah.
Yeah, it usually is anyway, budget season is done, everything's kinda mellowed out, that's why I think Chris started, you know, that's when we started it.
Yeah.
Chris had the idea of it.
Well, don't jinx us.
Yeah, I know.
Um, I'll make a motion to adopt the schedule for the select board twenty twenty-three meetings as amended to take out August seventh and twenty-first and add August fourteenth.
Second.
Is that close?
Yeah, sounds good.
Yay.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt, uh, the schedule for the select board's twenty twenty-three meetings as amended, uh, removing August seventh and twenty-first and adding an August fourteenth meeting. Is there any discussions? All those in favor? All right, next we have profit, um, third-party donation.
Everything's the same on this as it was before, Jesse?
Yep, just updated the dates.
Can I ask it one question? This lobsterman thing, this is gonna go on for years?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, uh, they just pushed it off to two years.
Would this be considered in the next coming budget year, a third-party request?
I can send them the application.
Yes, I mean, if we're adding or, I mean.
Yep. Yeah. No, it's worth.
I didn't know if that was considered for, for you.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, recognized nonprofit.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, it's up right there.
Yep.
Yeah, five, I want C three, I've C six.
I mean, you think that this is.
They're not deductibles.
Yeah.
Not gonna be over a year.
No, I don't think so.
Right. I don't know, a thought, maybe not, maybe it's a dumb idea.
No, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Send them the application.
Yeah, and if, yeah, I mean, they might.
You, you may not call, oh, I don't know, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, and the Maine Lobstormans Association, which is what this, what we donated for, don't get it confused too with, you'll see people donating to the lobster union, which is, uh, they're also fighting the same legal battle, but, um, so that, that's the, the Maine Lobstormans Association, I think, is the one, um, that most of the towns are, are donating to.
Yes, with Stonington's was NLA and then the ten thousand gave split five thousand NLA, five thousand MOU.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, that looks good to me and that sounds good to Mackenzie.
I mean, they can, if they want to.
Yep. Yeah.
I'm motion to approve the FY twenty-four grant application form for nonprofit organizations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the FY twenty-four grant application form for nonprofit organizations. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Next we have the FY twenty-four budget preparation, uh, the budget calendar.
So in your package is the proposed timeline for the FY twenty-four budget, um, all the dates, um, beginning in January coincide with the dates that you just, um, approved for the calendar. I'm gonna make, send the grant applications out tomorrow, um, to the nonprofits that have received it previously and any new ones, um, and then bring those back to you on their December nineteenth meeting.
I make a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty-four budget preparation schedule as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the fiscal year twenty-four budget preparation schedule as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have, um, surplus property sale. We have the red Culver steamer trailer.
Yeah.
Um, that the public works feels like it should be put out for sale, right?
Yep, um, it had, um, some breaks in the, cracks in the coils last, um, winter as they were, um, finishing up, um, winter. And so they didn't need it over the summer, so they've just gotten around to having it checked out, um, for repair. And in their opinion, it's no longer repairable, um, the steamer part and the trailer itself, um, is also showing signs of rust on the bottom areas. They're starting to show through, um, so it was felt that, um, by public works that it was no longer of use to them. Um, moving forward, um, we'll either rent one if we need it or, um, we've discussed the possibility of getting a portable water tank that can go in the back of truck six, um, because the harbor master says we can hook our, um, hot water pressure washer up to that, um, and accomplish what we used to accomplish as a circle. So it doesn't appear to be a need to replace it as it is, um, going forward.
I make a motion to approve the sale. I make a motion to approve the sale of steam material for surplus property as proposed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the sale of the steamer trailer for surplus property as proposed. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have the Island Institute letter of support.
Um so in your packets is a um draft um or standard letter um of support. The broadband committee um would like to send this to the main connectivity authority, um on behalf of, yeah, Island Institute, uh Island Institute is working on broadband issues um across the region and so they are applying for um a grant through the main connectivity authority and looking for letters of support, um. They may be a source of um funding for the broadband, for the town, for the broadband committee moving forward, um as they work on plans for future broadband extension. And there's no um costs or commitment as far as any of those and contracting with them to be able to send this letter of support.
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to send a letter of support for the Island Institute, the main connectivity authority.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the town manager to send a letter of support for the Island Institute to the main connectivity authority. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, now it's you Jesse, town managers report.
Alright, I'll go fast second, so, four weeks. Um so since the last meeting, um I worked on League of Towns minutes, attended the broadband committee meeting, began staff performance evaluations, completed the heating assistance application, um met the town engineer on, out on Steenville Ward Road, uh to look at a embankment issue. Attended the League of Towns meeting, prepared harbor committee financial reports, prepared these financial reports, applied for the connectivity main um grant for the broadband committee. Um it's a um technical grant for community outreach, um if we get awarded that. Uh reviewed con plan chapters, attended the first uh one hundred and seventy-fifth committee meeting, attended a school board meeting, um to discuss the community building and continued work on the FY twenty-four budget. Uh office staff was busy with the uh election, uh updates to the website, FY twenty-one foreclosure notices and the M D reporting. Public works uh did a road repair on Turner and Cape Road, uh cleanup and maintenance on the vehicles, cut and trimmed brush on Dix Point Road for that construction project. Uh repaired the road at Back Beach, cut up limbs of the town dock, cleaned up a tree on Dodge Point, shut the water off at Hillarath Cemetery, washed the siding on the town office building here on the back, swapped out um trucks one and two at callouts, getting their annual service. Swept the town dock and sidewalks, uh PDQ door came in and did a annual inspection of the doors, the garage. Uh moved some rocks at the wharf that Justin needed moved, um put the flume wing on truck one. Uh tree removal on Rice Road and Flatiron Road, ditching on Rice Road, truck two was picked up, um in Elsworth and the flume wing we put on. Picked up calcium and um spread calcium on uh Cape Carter and Turner. Swept the parking lot here in the Sands and Shedd lot, um worked on the truck three sander, added a mangor for a repair, um it's now back as well. Truck nine is back from Gordius's. Uh treated um to the derrods and mounted the strobe on truck six. Harbor master worked on harbor committee agenda in minutes, recovered a sailboat from Sawyer Island, uh cleaned up the circle area, swept the parking lot, repaired the rock retaining wall of public works, uh moved some moorings around in the parking lot with the machine, scheduled the um hoist inspections at the wharf and at the public works garage, those inspections um have already taken place. Uh they, he assisted public works with the tree removal on Rice Road. A small lobster skiff washed up at the wharf, uh he did hoist maintenance after the hoist inspection, repaired the broken ladder on the hoist, um ordered new rope for hoist three, pulled up uh the stump out on Rice Road, talked to some residents about tracks on the wharf, um dealt with the boat with reversing gear issues, um called above the electric hoist being down again, left snowmen repaired and assisted in installing the light on truck six. Over the next few weeks, I'm going to continue FY twenty-four budget work, attend the League of Towns, um the heat pump install is going to take place here at the town office this Thursday and I have the FEMA direct technical assistance meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you Jesse. Suggestions for the next meeting?
Yeah, could we just, I'd talk to you a little bit about it, just have a discussion, see what everyone thinks about uh what we can do about non-residents buying property and having weekly rentals around town. Um I just think it takes away a bit from uh our affordable housing that we keep, people keep asking about, so. Just throw ideas around, you know, I'm only here with people to have to say, that's all.
Non-resident um rentals is what you're.
Well, people, yeah, buying property, non-residents buying property and putting them directly on the market for weekly rentals.
Yep, yep. Yep.
I don't have anything against residents being able to use that income, I think that's great, you know, we should be able to use the property around town for our own means, but.
Is that something that we should check into legal wise first, or?
Yeah, I'd love to change.
Okay, just before the meeting, just to be clear.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yep, okay.
You could even have a discussion, unlimited residency, but it's, you know, even bringing up the subject, I think is probably a good idea.
Yeah.
However you work on the minute.
It seems like the comprehensive plan, when I was in here, that was one of the largest topics. Um the weekly rentals and and not affordable housing, so, yeah, I think those two go hand in hand.
Yeah.
The other thing I was thinking maybe we had to talk about is setting up a legal fund.
Yes.
It seems to be a larger and larger part of our town expenses every year, might be nice to.
Don't jinx us.
It's on, it's on my list for the FY twenty-four budget to convert.
Okay, it's nothing probably we need to talk about, is it?
To convert the, right now we just have it budgeted in the line, but to set up a legal reserve and then we can replenish it as we usually.
Yeah, it seems to be getting pretty ridiculous, Lyle.
It's gonna be a good year.
Let's hope.
Alright, that is it, then uh date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, December fifth, twenty twenty-two at five P M at the town office.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, December fifth, twenty twenty-two, five P M at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Alright.
Going fast.